I should just clarify my role. I'm just here to observe so that I can track this process as it moves forward. If there is a legal question, I'm happy to give it a shot, but most likely I'd have to take another advisory.
Well, Alan, welcome. Alan has asked me to take the role. First, I'd like to go through the Opportunity Fund Board that's here today, starting with if you could announce who you are. We appreciate it.
Sharon Delabar, representing the city of Port Angeles.
Joe Murray, Clough County District 3.
Mike McAllier, Clough County District 1.
Bill Herman, Port Angeles.
Alan Barner, District 2, Clough County.
Thank you. That is the board of directors. I'm Bill Greenberg from the EDC.
Jennifer Lindley, EDC.
Amy Delabar, EDC.
And we have guests today, including Nathan West from the city. And the rest of you, identify yourselves.
Sharon, Port Angeles City Council.
Patrick Downey, Deputy Mayor, City of Port Angeles.
Brian Went, Civil Deputy Prosecuting Attorney for Clough County.
Dale Wilson, NBC News.
Congratulations, Senator.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. Welcome, everybody. First, let me ask you, when you are making comments, to please speak up, not just because I'm hard to hear, but we have an audience as well. I mean, your backs are kind of turned to them, so when you're making comments, we'd all kind of speak up so we can all hear in place. Also, if you have your cell phones that may be on vibrate or turned off, that would be something that I frequently overlook. Appreciate that. All right, the first order of business, by the way, this is kind of deja vu all over again, isn't it? The first order of business is to do something we couldn't do last time. We didn't have them all finished up yet, and that is to deal with the minutes for the last two meetings. Do you all have the comments of the minutes that Jennifer sent out to you? We have the April 23rd and April 27th. Does anybody have April 23rd?
Before you do that, could you explain the deja vu? Or get the county to explain it? You know, what is public notice? What kind of public notice is required for this meeting and other advisory board meetings that the county has?
What do you mean, as to why we're meeting again?
Yeah. It's because we didn't, apparently, there wasn't the proper public notice. But what is the requirement for public notice? Is it back in the classified section where official notices or when there's a weekly column in the PDN that lists all the things that are going to happen in the county? You know, what is the definition of public notice?
My understanding, it was not that we did not do the public notice correctly. This was not why we set the reset button. I presume that's not the issue, was not our process. It was something out of our control, and we just had to do this process, basically, start to finish.
But so that we don't make the quote "mistake" again, what is the mistake that was made?
I don't know.
We are not deja vu, but we've been asked to do it again by the county. And we gave appropriate notice for this meeting, and we'll be doing it again, incidentally, for the report presentation. In fact, and we set this notice today, which is seven days' notice, and that means the earliest we could hold a public meeting before the port is next Thursday. And if I could, I'd like to find out if the group of you, six of you, can meet next Thursday at the same time here from the Port Angeles. And on their request, it's a good time to find out, rather than take a due report. Well, I guess I'm asking if all six of you can be here a week from now.
I'd be the 23rd.
I can't.
You can't?
I cannot. Can everyone else?
How many can make it?
I left my phone in my car, so I don't know.
So we have four?
I think so.
And perhaps, we have this, six who are not here today. Then let's informally plan, we'll do this right, but let's informally plan to do it next Thursday.
We send out all the documentation that the port's sent in?
Yes.
Back to Mike's question, can I address a question to the attorney?
Well, let's finish this first.
Okay.
I want to be sure that we got a set of meetings, so let's wrap up that. We wouldn't have to do it Thursday necessarily. No. We can do it, we have the following Monday. And I should, when we know that everybody's going to be here, possibly. What's happening on Monday, the 20th?
Email, following Monday. I'm in Seattle.
I'm sorry?
I'm in Seattle, following Monday.
All week?
How about Monday?
Monday.
Maybe we should do a poll and figure out the date.
Oh, we will figure it out right now. If we could. Let's just run through, say, Tuesday, the 21st.
Right now, it looks like we can do it next Thursday.
I think we should do Tuesday. But that's not seven days.
No, I mean, a week.
A week and a half.
Thursday is seven.
Yeah, you can't go backwards. You need to go the next week, Alan. It's going to be the 20th.
Can we just send out the thing, let's just send it out email, and we can all respond this afternoon.
But I won't be here the 28th either.
Well, I propose we do it next Thursday.
We have to make a due report, so I'll send out the due report in a few days.
But it does sound like we have to.
24th?
23rd.
23rd. All right. Other than Joe, that's it? Everyone else can do it?
I might be able to do the 24th, it just depends on getting the theories back.
Well, let's try the 23rd. Could it?
Okay.
23rd?
23rd.
23rd.
We need to check with Dan.
Yeah.
Now, we do have an agenda, and I don't want to hop off the agenda and get off the beach path, because we want to get this done expeditiously. Sharon, you have a question specifically relating to this or to the minutes?
Not to the minutes. If you want to do the minutes first, I have a question relating to the public notice, public hearing, because it's Mike.
All right, why don't you ask it right now, and then we'll...
My question is simply this: Who is responsible for the public notice, since commissioners are the voting body? Is it not the county that is official for the, responsible for the official public hearing?
No, I'm happy to take a stab, and I'll try to answer Mr. McAllier's and Ms. Delabar's questions. So because this is an advisory body, and you do help the Clough County make certain decisions, we are subject, as when I say "we," I mean this body, we are subject to the Open Public Meetings Act by state law, county code, and even our own bylaws. Because this board does not meet on a regular timetable, we need to notice our meetings consistent with that provision in 4230, I believe it's 080, the provision that pertains to special meetings, and there's certain requirements that need to be there. For example, you know, 24-hour advance notice to local media, publication of the same notice on the county, the agency's website, you know, posting notice at the front door down at the county if you're going to meet offsite, and then also having meetings here. So seeing that there was a reset button pushed for a host of reasons, recognizing that a lot of critical attention has been brought to this matter, we just thought, you know, let's do it again. But as we're doing it again, let's make sure that we're following the strictures of special meeting provision carefully. So when it comes to your specific question, Ms. Delabar, about who's responsible for it?
Official public hearing, if there is required.
Yeah, the official, any public hearing, I believe, would be held by, would be responsible for the board. This isn't the public hearing, this is just the public meeting. So the public hearing will be done after the fact.
Yes, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. All right, to the minutes. Did everybody get April 23rd, which was dealing with the port request? Jennifer sent it out a couple of times. Does everybody have it?
I did bring it with me.
Okay, what you did, you reviewed it. All right, then. First of all, I would entertain a motion regarding those minutes. Do you accept them?
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 23rd meeting.
Second, thank you. Second, my oral. Any discussion on the minutes for April 23rd?
I would don't say that they are really, really complete, very, very detailed, more than I would have done.
Yeah. Are you asleep, Jennifer?
Yeah.
All right, then. Any further comments, questions, issues? All right, then. Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor of accepting the minutes of April 23rd as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. April 27th minutes having to do with the waterfront transportation presentation, did everybody get those?
I move that we accept the minutes of the April 27th meeting as presented.
Second, my oral. Any discussion on those minutes?
If this is, if it needs the 27th, not 70th. That's when it was submitted.
Okay, any other questions? All right, then. Seeing none, I'll call for the question, all in favor of accepting the minutes, submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, at this point, Bill will have some comments, and then I have just a couple of brief comments before we open the public meeting. Bill, would you deal with conflict of interest first, please?
Yes, sir, Bill. You've all seen the waterfront transportation improvement plan of the city, excuse me, and Sharon, do you have any conflict with the oral?
No. By my side, as you see, as well as the board, do you have, do you consider that a conflict? I don't. No. I don't think so.
No, no conflict? No conflict.
None of them.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Bill. No conflict of interest at this point. Now, I'm going to ask Bill to review part of the process for the EDC, is to review the applications and be certain that they meet the criteria per code to come forward to the Opportunity Fund Board, and Bill has done this. Can you bring us up to speed on that, please?
I'd like to stress something that has come clear since our last meeting, and that is when we review these proposals and to the requests for grants, we have to look at them with two standards that I personally appreciate for my own business and background. And one is full and fair disclosure by the applicant, and the other thing we look at is the integrity of the project. I'm mentioning those two things as we have the opportunity perhaps to look at other things in the future. Those are two important concepts. Second, we have from the code, the following points to follow when we consider the project, and I want to stress that the last time we met, we were going by the code of county code in 2001, and we hadn't understood that the code had been upgraded, if you will, and changed in 2007. So we're now operating under that code, and the language is more or less the same, but slightly different. So I want you to be aware of that. The Opportunity Fund Board needs to consider, at a minimum, the following points, in addition to the ones I noted before. The cost of the project in relation to the project's potential to create economic development as defined in the code. The priority of the project, with other economic development projects included in the public facilities and/or comprehensive plans of the county or cities. The readiness of the project, including availability of project financing and arrangements completed for cooperative efforts necessary between governmental jurisdictions. Whether alone should be considered for a portion of the funding proposal, particularly if the project is for utility and when completed has potential to generate revenue through user rates. The need to retain funds for known future projects that have high priority in the community. We've reviewed the waterfront transportation plan with the city and with Nathan, Nathan West, and we believe it meets every single standard I've just described, and so feel very comfortable in submitting it to you.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions, Bill, with regard to the administrative process for accepting and forwarding an application? All right, thank you. Now, at this point, we're going to open the public meeting. Let me ask anybody from the audience, if you have any written comments that you would like to submit to be read into the record, please send them forward, we'll give them to Jennifer, and then before we're done, we'll read those into the record if you have any. You have the opportunity after a while to speak to the issue as well. All right, we hereby open the public meeting, and at this point, Bill, I'd like to ask you to give, if you will, an administrative overview that this meets the specific requirements. I think I just did that. You have that, it was incorporated in there, but all right, that's good enough. That'll work. All right, at this point, Nathan, I understand you'll be making a presentation, so the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you very much for having me again here to present a very important project to the city of Port Angeles. This morning, there's a number of things I want to tell you about, but let me start about telling you more about the development of this project and how it came about. So the waterfront transportation improvement plan is essentially the foundation of this project. It was an element that came through a Port Angeles City Council Subcommittee known as Port Angeles Forward that developed a series of capital projects to improve our community, to improve it for our residents and for our visitors, but simultaneously to inspire economic development and to be an engine for economic development within the community. I want to tell you about a number of components of the project today. I'm going to give you an overall overview of the waterfront development project, which is a subset of the waterfront transportation improvement plan that's located in the downtown area. I also want to tell you a little bit about the public process that the city went through to arrive at the plans to implement this capital project. I want to talk about some of the permitting that we've achieved, as well as some of the permitting hurdles that we experienced along the way. And I want to tell you about the Opportunity Fund applicability for this project. It's also important to note that this project is supported by the comprehensive plan. I'm going to get into that in a little bit more detail in the presentation. But I also want to talk about the phase specifically that we're asking for funding for, which is Phase 2 of the waterfront development project. And then finally, I want to share with you the local involvement in the project. As an overall theme that I want everyone to be aware of is that this project has really made a concerted effort to ensure we have local involvement, and that every dollar we spend on this project goes back into the local economy, supporting additional jobs, and at the end of the day, we want to see an economic benefit. And to date, we've achieved that goal. Looking at the overall project, if you look at the red rectangle on your left, that is the area known as the city park that's developed as part of Phase 2. But what you also see is the entire project that the city is looking at completing in a five-year period. Essentially, we've started with the west end of town, starting at the Valley Creek estuary. The intent is to continue the project all the way along Railroad Avenue until you get to the Hollywood Beach area of downtown Port Angeles in front of the Red Lion. So the full extent of the project, you can see in that conceptual drawing, right now we've completed the Esplanade portion of the project, which was Phase 1, and the park element is under construction today, and that's what we're requesting funding for. I think it's important to share with you some of the successes we've had in Phase 1 of the project, to really emphasize that City Council set the standard of high quality in this project, and it's really important that we feel we've achieved that. We have a nice-looking project that we feel is very well utilized by the public at this point in time, and we've really been efficient at trying to find creative ways to fund the project with numerous grants involved and lots of different diversity of funding support. From a public process perspective, this was the most important element to City Council. They wanted to see the public involved, engaged, and learning about this project, literally helping us to develop that concept. So to start with, one of the things that we had the designer do was actually open up a rental space in downtown Port Angeles, paying a local landlord to rent out a space and have that open for the public to come in and watch the design in progress. It was an important piece of the project, and for a week, we had night meetings every week, inviting the public in to contribute input as to what they wanted to see, what they wanted to see their waterfront become at the end of the day, and different specific elements that they wanted to see in the project. So far, we've had over 120 different efforts to reach out via newspaper, via media, just really trying to reach out and communicate about the importance of this project and the goals that this project is trying to achieve. Those efforts include City Council meetings, planning commission workshops, downtown open houses. We had an art slam that invited all the local artists to participate in the design of the project, and we've been promoting the project at the county fair, as well as the K-1P home show. From a permitting perspective, it was really important that we go through permitting once. We felt that was a significant cost savings to the city. We felt that by going through permitting once, we weren't going to have to come back and revisit it every time we needed to move forward with each phase of the project. It enables us to, when we receive funding, to move forward with each one of those phases, which to coincide with the Opportunity Fund goals, it makes it a ready-to-go project. We've received over 13 different permits. Our permitting period covers a five-year period. It's important to note, we have some challenges relative to some of those permits. One of those is that there's only six months of the year that we're allowed to do in-water work, and that's been a real challenge along the way, but we've overcome that challenge, and we're certainly getting through it. We did have some delays due to federal permitting, and that was a result of multiple National Environmental Policy Act processes that were required to go through, through three different divisions of the federal government. And then secondly, we did have a bit of a six-month delay at the very beginning of the project, trying to obtain some of that federal permitting. But I will say, it's probably important to mention, it's been a really good learning experience for the city and for my department, so that we understand what it's looked like for all of the other private sector entities who want to go through the permitting process. We've learned the experience that they have to experience, and I think it's been really helpful and eye-opening to see what people have to do when they undertake 13 different permits for one project.
You put a positive spin on that.
It's certainly challenging. So the Opportunity Fund applicability, I honestly couldn't think of a more applicable project. Opportunity Fund prioritized use for infrastructure. This project is very much about infrastructure, incorporating infrastructure in the downtown that supports the public need in the public realm. I think it's important, too, that this infrastructure greatly supports economic growth. From one perspective, it's providing those jobs through the construction of the project, but secondly, it's also acting to inspire new development in downtown Port Angeles, and then it's also acting to provide a more of a tourism-friendly product for our downtown that encourages visitation, encourages more events, more activities, that at the end of the day helps support those downtown area businesses. It's important to say, too, that this is a transportation project, so we're incorporating transportation infrastructure that also supports transportation internationally via the Cobo Ferry and transportation to and from our downtown area to the national park. Finally, it's also important to mention that this project directly supports or facilitates access to the Terminal 4 pier that's owned by the Port of Port Angeles, and that pier is actively utilized, particularly by high-tight seafoods at this point in time, but there's others that utilize that pier, and the hope is that by making the access-related improvements that we have as part of this project, it's going to better provide that access for future jobs located at that pier. So as I mentioned, this project is supported by the city's comprehensive plan, but it's also very much supported by the county's comprehensive plan. It's been rated as one of the highest priority city capital facilities projects. It's also been identified as one of the regional priorities in the state transportation improvement. So we're really happy with the priorities and recognition this project has received at the city level, at the county level, and at the state, though. This is a concept of what the Phase 2 project is intended to look like at the end of the day. There's a number of really key features here. A number of the elements in this project are really intended to reach out to some of the heritage in the Port Angeles area, including the Lower Elwah, Clough County, some of their past history, including circle-up areas that can be utilized for canoe journeys. You see here, the plaza area, one acts as an opportunity for events, but also acts as an opportunity for new and improved access to the Terminal 4 pier. You also see two new pocket beaches as part of the park. Those portions of construction have been completed and are on the ground, and in any case, the park is beginning to take a good form. Specifically, though, the funding elements that we're asking for is contributions towards the plaza area and the trail, and that's what we're asking for from the Opportunity Fund Board. This is a construction drawing. I believe you also have this in your packet. It just shows more of those elements, and it spells out what each of those elements And this graphic shows you that beach construction, Brook and Brook, a local contractor, was involved in the beach construction. They did an excellent job, and I think this is a good time to mention that the local contractors involved in this project have taken a great deal of pride in their work, and at the end of the day, it makes for a better product. It makes a better product for the public who are coming down and using it, because every one of those contractors wants to make sure that they're remembered for the work that they did here. They're going to take pride in it, and they're very conscious of the quality of work that they do in completing the project and the work. This is just another graphic of the beaches that were constructed by Brook and Brook, and an overview of the project that the Peninsula Daily News provided to us from the air that just shows you the beaches on the ground. So local involvement, again, I think it's been a City Council priority to ensure that this project is an economic development driver, that it is providing jobs on the ground. And so every bit of this project, from the conceptual development to the design to the construction, City Council has stressed the importance of having local involvement, and I think it coincides with the city's Choose Local program. We're trying to find ways to integrate local contractors and professionals in every bit of work that we do. I've highlighted in bold those entities that are really working on and focused on the Phase 2 project, but I think it's important to highlight the work that's been done by many of these different professionals. So at the top, you see Zenith Associates. So at the top, you see Zenevik and Associates. Zenevik and Associates has done a vast majority of the design work. And it's interesting that the city did an RFP for design on the project. We sent it out, and we received no proposals back with a local professional in the lead position. But many of those proposals we received back, and I believe there were 13 of them we received back, many of those have local subs. So in the one that was selected by City Council, Steve Zenevik of Zenevik and Associates was the sub that was selected. The prime contractor consultant in that scenario has been, he has recognized that importance of council to have local professionals involved and prioritize that. And I can tell you, he has given the majority of the work to the local professionals involved, trying to recognize that and see them continue carrying the project forward. So Zenevik and Associates has done just that. They've had a majority of the design work from an engineering perspective, and they've really done a great job with it, taking a lot of ownership about the quality of work that's done from the design all the way through construction at the end of the day. And they come to every construction meeting we have to ensure that quality is upheld. It's important, too, to mention Straffler Environmental. Straffler Environmental is a local environmental firm who did the environmental assessment for the project that was required as part of the federal MEO process. The biological assessment as well as all of the environmental permitting was done by Dave Straffler of Straffler Environmental, and he did an excellent job with it, helping us navigate some of those difficult permitting processes. Allison Design is a company that is owned by Laura Allison. She's a local artist, and many of the projects have artistic elements in them that were actually developed by her as a local artist. So for example, the trail markers that you see incorporated in the waterfront trail, all along the waterfront trail, approximately every 30 feet, you see trail markers both in bronze and in glass. And she developed those as a local artist and designed them. And so that's something that we're really happy to see is a local artist stepping up and making some of these design elements work. West Tech actually stepped up, and so did Unger Engineering, to take on more of the regulatory role. It's important to note that as the overseer of this project from a design perspective, I felt strongly I had a conflict of interest in being the super responsible official, in being the building official, in being the shoreline administrator for this project. And it was important to me that I step aside and let someone else play that role who wasn't deeply involved in the project and who is not a project proponent. So essentially, I was the project proponent. I was the applicant, and therefore, we had Gene Unger step up as building official, and West Tech Environmental actually stepped up and was the shoreline administrator and the super responsible official on the project. NCI Engineering has done much of the concrete inspection that's been required throughout the project. Wengler Survey was a surveyor in prior phases of the project. Scuba Supplies is a local company who also did the required dive efforts. They actually had to go down and do dive videos in support of some of the environmental permits that we had to see issued. And they did a great job with that, really interesting videos as well to see that underwater experience as far as the project that we're working on. Brad Lyman Grover of Lyman Grover Surveying is doing the current surveying for the park element of the project. Brook and Brook Construction, as I mentioned, did the beaches on the project. And Primo Construction has had both the trail phase and the final park phase of the project. And we're really happy with the work that they've done. They also were the responsible contractor for Phase One of the project, known as the esplanade. CNJ Excavating was also a contractor in the project, doing a lot of the landscaping work. You see the artistic sculpture that's been integrated in one of the larger circle-up areas, and that's something that they assisted us with. Allform welding, I think, is a really great story because it is a railing scenario for the esplanade portion of the project that we were advised, you really need to find someone from outside the area to do this. But Allform's really stepped up, and they innovated a design for the railing system for that, for the esplanade itself. And they literally created from scratch the design elements of that railing with the wiring system, the interconnectivity of all the railing parts. And I can go back to that slide if it's of interest because it really shows you, they did a great job of innovating and basically machining parts for a complete railing along the entire project. Olympic Electric has done all the electrical work on the project. They're a sub to Primo Construction. Angeles Concrete did much of the concrete work. And Admit's Vision Photography did the artistic elements in the wind screens that you see along the esplanade of the project. So again, I just want to emphasize, there's been a great deal of local involvement. It really helps to verify that the dollars the city of Port Angeles has spent on this project have gone back into the local economy, and the dollars that the Opportunity Fund will invest in this project will also go back into the local economy. I think that's a really important point. So in conclusion, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have. But I again want to emphasize, this project is very much about choosing local and making sure we're reinvesting in the local funds.
I have a question, Nathan. Here along the slides, it actually showed kind of a central riprap jetty arrangement. And the actual photo of it shows it slightly different. Is that yet to be completed, or is the final design, the photo that we saw, that's going to vary slightly from this?
It's pretty similar, though. On the ground, I think you would find it's quite similar to that concept, if not pretty precise. But I can go back to the photograph. I think the difference is, you're probably seeing the high tide here. And so if you're, this actually comes out into the water a bit more. And so if you saw that at low tide, it might look a little bit more like the picture.
And I assume that that has a lot to do with erosion, with wave activity, high-low tide and high swells and that sort of thing, do not erode the beach?
That's correct. It's also possible that, at the time the picture was taken, I don't have a specific date on it, it's also possible they simply hadn't finished with the riprap construction. Because again, they were working under the six-month fish window requirement, trying to get the work done when they could to do in-water work. And so some of the other work had to take place before they were able to come back and finish the work.
Nathan, I have two questions. One, the first one is, when does your six-month window end? Because I know we're kind of up against some time limitations here. And then the second one, would you review, again, the dollars, where, you know, the project cost and where that money is coming from?
Certainly. So the, from the fish window perspective, we're in good shape right now. And if the fish window opened back up for us on July 16th, that means in-water work is allowed from now, essentially until January of this year, or January of next year. So we're in good shape with the fish window. It enables us to do, you know, a final detail of the beach areas, making sure they're graded appropriately before we open up and get all of that done. So we're good from a fish window perspective. So from a funding perspective, we've had a diversity of grants in the project. Essentially, the Phase Two component is about $3.7 million, and I think the exact figure is in your application there. But I will say that $1.7 million of that approximately is from grant funding. And that grant funding comes from RCO, Recreation and Conservation Office from the state of Washington. It comes from the Community Economic Revitalization Board, which is administered through Department of Commerce at the state of Washington. That's a grant that the EDC greatly helped us with in the past, and it was a $500,000 grant. We also received some funds from FEMA, approximately $261,000 from FEMA. It was a port security grant, which helped pay for and cover the lighting of the project. And those are some of the primary grants that we've received. The majority of the project itself was funded by the city's Economic Development Fund, most of which is coming directly from the Twiston Settlement agreement. Thank you.
Yeah, Nathan? I was wondering if you have made any attempt at estimating the level of economic benefit that will accrue from this whole waterfront project?
That number for you today? But we've done that in support of some of the grants that we've gone after at the federal level because the federal government does like to look at that figure and basically the approximate dollar amount or multiplier effect from this overall project. And it's a pretty substantial number. I can't, I don't feel comfortable quoting it today because I'd probably get it wrong. But I believe it's the, it's an agency at the federal level called CEA, which provides a multiplier for economic projects and what those benefits are at the end of the day. But I'd be happy to get that to you, if that's okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just wanted to make a comment. I made this before. I think it's absolutely fantastic that you were able to use so many local trade. I know sometimes you can't, but sometimes you can and people don't. And I think projects to be commended for that reason. The other question I did have, the initial presentation said you were in a real-time sensitivity. Other than the six-month window, has anything else impacted due to this hiccup?
So it has changed a bit, and it's certainly very time-sensitive. So what we were dealing with at the time that we turned in the application is we actually had bids that we didn't receive. And those bids, I think I mentioned at the last presentation that one of the reasons we didn't apply to the Opportunity Fund board previously is we wanted to make sure that that bid process resulted in a local contractor, and in fact, it did. And so we received those bid prices from Primo Construction. And those bid prices are held invalid for approximately a 60-day period, I believe. And so we had that 60-day window to ensure that Primo would honor the prices that they gave us. At this point in time, we still have faith and confidence that Primo knows this is an important project to the local community. They will likely be very competitive and consistent with the pricing that they gave us previously. That would be our hope, but that's certainly up to them. And I think in all likelihood, it will come down to very similar pricing that they gave us previously. But no, they're not required to maintain them, so. But we have reason to believe that they will be consistent at this point in time. We feel fairly safe that we can come back, do a change order on the project, and get all of the complete project integrated once we receive the Opportunity Funds.
I have a comment that I've been, I've been here 24 years, and from about the first day I came in, I recognized and have heard from some of the others of this sleeping asset that we have on the waterfront. And, you know, you can't, you're either on the waterfront or you're not. You've done something that you can change, and if you have that as an asset. All these years, we've all thought, wouldn't it be wonderful that we're developing? Look at these other cities that have done so, and look at how it's exploded their waterfront with business and tourism, reasons for people to stay. So I, for one, am really excited about the project. I can see the long-term benefits. I guess sometimes you look back and you say, why wasn't this done 30 years ago? Well, here we are today, and it's being done now. So kudos to everybody at all. I'm very excited about the project.
Thank you.
Question. How does this tie with the Coho project in January, February? It was in the paper this morning.
So the Coho project, I believe, is, and I can't say I read, I caught an article this morning on the Coho specifically. So you might, there was yesterday?
Yesterday.
Okay. But the project that I'm aware of is just relative to the terminal across the way in Victoria? No? Can you tell me a little bit more about that one?
If I can remember that from this morning. January, February, well, one, they have to work in the water. They've got some kind of a...
The dolphins?
Dolphin that they spin very on. And the other is that they're cleaning up their access to the wooden bars and people into the boat. Anybody else?
Yeah.
It had something to do with that main pier that they rotate around.
But there was, the turning knuckle, I am aware, is a project that they have. But I apologize, I didn't notice that.
Maybe the turning knuckle. And most of the stuff is being done in Victoria.
No.
Okay. Yeah, Victoria's the big one that I'm aware of.
Any other questions from board?
I just wanted to make a comment that whether the timing was on purpose or accidental, I think it was great that you were able to get the sewer work done under Railroad Avenue and the Polk Street without having to go back and tear up what you did here to get that done. So I think that was...
That was very purposeful, and it did take a very coordinated effort. It was great. Thank you.
All right then, not seeing any more. At this point in time, I'd like to open it up for anyone to comment. And I'd like to ask you to state your name, your address, and the nature of your interest before proceeding, and five minutes or so limit would be great. So with that, yeah?
I need to go to a funeral in Seattle, so.
Stand up.
Let me just take a moment. I'll be very brief. I think it's extraordinarily interesting and ironic that the money we're talking about today is through the Opportunity Fund. If this project is supported by your decision today, which of course I wholeheartedly encourage you to do that, we are going to provide to not only our residents, but to many visitors who come here, an opportunity to enjoy us, enjoy their experience in Port Angeles far better than it would have, we had never done this project. I cannot tell you how many times I've heard the comment that we wished we had more access to the water. Hollywood Beach, of course, does do that. But this particular project is unique in that it provides a far more extensive experience. It's adjacent to the estuary. Anyway, just, the use of the word opportunity is extraordinarily apropos for this project to provide people an opportunity to experience Port Angeles in a very special way. I encourage you to move forward with a positive approval. Thank you very much.
Pat, real quickly, could you just give for the minutes your address?
331 East 11th Street, Port Angeles.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Very much appreciated.
Sorry to run off, but I have to take care of some family business. Appreciate it very much. And I concur with everything that young man said over there.
Thank you. Sherry?
Yes. Good morning. I'm Sherry Kidd, 101 East 10th Street, Port Angeles, Washington, which is the house that my parents built in 1940, and my grandparents, on both sides of the family, established residence as young married couples. So I come from a history of, an opportunity to grow up in Port Angeles where my entire life I've heard, why don't we fix up our waterfront? You see, 100 years ago, this conversation was being had over in Victoria. They had gold miners and helped build the town, and they talked about their downtown area. It was a mud flat, and when the tide went out, that was fine. But when the tide came in, the garbage and the sewage came back, and it was a stinky, dirty mud flat. And they realized that for opportunity for the city to grow, they needed to have a plan for their waterfront. So their advisory committees and their city council 100 years ago developed a plan for the downtown waterfront in Victoria. So when you take the Coho over, it's such a pleasure to come into the waterfront. It's an international host city. But coming this way, we're welcoming the world to the United States of America, not just Port Angeles, Washington. We are an international host city. And one thing I have heard my entire life is, why don't we fix up our waterfront? So in 2008, I had the opportunity, as a member of the city council, to chair the Port Angeles Forward Committee. And that's, we were looking for an opportunity to work on a project that wasn't currently being worked on by other agencies. And we talked about the importance of improving our waterfront, having access to, for the locals, and having the, setting the stage for people coming in to our downtown because we realized our downtown need to be revitalized. We needed more energy in our downtown. We needed more energy in our downtown. And frankly, we are looking ahead generations so that we expect redevelopment of our downtown. The city council members, we have traveled to Bellingham, to Anacortes, to Bremerton, and we have seen the 180-degree turn and the effect, positive effect it had on their downtown. New businesses come in, new stores, new restaurants. And shortly after, it was, we opened our Phase One of our new waterfront promenade. I remember welcoming an international group of bicycle tourists from, I believe, South Korea. And coming off the Coho, we had such a beautiful gathering place and picturesque place to take pictures and to welcome international guests. And I thought, yes, this is the way it's supposed to be. So I'm very proud of Nathan West and the city staff that've worked so hard with this. I'm very proud of our Port Angeles Forward Committee, and I'm very proud of the city council for staying focused and realize that we have to upgrade and improve our waterfront for the sake of the people who live here, for the sake of the people who come into our community, and to allow our community the opportunity and potential to grow. So I want to thank you for being an advisory committee with a vision that can see what we're trying to do. What you're doing now will help us now and for generations to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sherri. Appreciate that. Anyone else? All right then. At this point, thanks, everybody. We need, I will close the public hearing portion of this. And this is where we deal with. Nathan is available, and you, it's appropriate now to make any comments between ourselves, ask any questions of Nathan, any issues to see on the table before we proceed to a motion. So the floor is open for questions, comments, or anything for Nathan.
My question, do you have a plan for revegetation in that area, or trees, or other creatures?
We do. Sherri, would you prefer I go back to the front? I can.
Please.
So there's quite a bit of vegetation incorporated in the project. Particularly, we have chosen to use native vegetation throughout the project. One, it helps us with, from a watering perspective, it's not going to take a great deal of water or work to maintain the plants, and they're incorporated on the ground. This particular portion is all heavily landscaped. That area was a requirement of the Army Corps of Engineers. Actually, they required mitigation planting as part of the project. And so you see a lot of planting in there that corrodes, a variety of bushes such as snowberry and that type of landscaping. But this area is more of a regulatory planting area. This is the second regulatory planting area. Also contains similar native species of plants. But throughout the project, in this area, you see more of a rain garden approach. It also utilizes native vegetation. But throughout the project, we do have landscaping incorporated, and it's heavily landscaped. Does that answer your question?
No. Any other questions, comments, issues, anything for Nathan? All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I would be happy to move again, once more, if this board moves this forward with the recommendation of approval to the county commissioners.
Second from Joe. All right, motion on the table. We recommend to the county commissioners to approve this use of Opportunity Funds. Any further discussion or comments? It's, according to this, it's $285,0952. Thank you. Is that so correct? Yeah. Easy for me to say. Any other comments or issues? All right, seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. Our recommendation goes forward. Thank you, everybody, for your involvement. Thank you to the public for being here and your comments of Nathan.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much.
That's a presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be a week from today, here, this location, at 10:30, where we will take up the board requirement for the board application. Thank you so much. Orville, welcome aboard. I didn't get a chance to say that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for being here and for your time and energy, and the staff, the EDC, for all the background and grunt work and administrating work that goes into getting us here. Thanks, everyone.
Yes, I have, I still understand. 2008, I have.
The Congress is sending out the package, the package report.
Yes.
We started working on this project ourselves. And then we have in 2009, we have that, the tax report.
This or to the minutes?
Not to the minutes, if you want to do the minutes first. I have a question relating to public notice, public hearing, considering Mike.
All right, why don't you ask it right now, and we'll.
My question is simply this. Who is responsible for the public notice, since commissioners are the voting body? Is it not the county that is official for the, responsible for the official public hearing?
No, I'm happy to try to take a stab, and I'll try to answer Mr. McLeir's and Ms. Delivar's question. So because this is an advisory body, and you do help the Clougham County make certain decisions, we are subject, as, when I say we, I mean this body, we are subject to the Open Public Meetings Act by state law, county code, and even our own bylaws. Because this board does not meet on a regular timetable, we need to notice our meetings consistent with that provision in 4230, I believe it's 080, the provision that pertains to special meetings. And there's certain requirements that need to be there. For example, you know, 24-hour advance notice to local media publication of the same notice on the county, the agency's website, you know, posting notice at the front door down at the county if you're going to meet offsite, and then also having meetings here. So seeing that there was a reset button pushed for a host of reasons, recognizing that a lot of critical attention has been brought to this matter, we just thought, you know, let's do it again. But as we're doing it again, let's make sure that we're following the strictures of special meeting provision carefully. So when it comes to your specific question, Ms. Delivar, about who's responsible for it.
Official public hearing, if there is required.
Yeah.
We are not that sure. But we've been asked to do it again by the county. And we gave appropriate notice for this meeting, and we'll be doing it again instantly for the board presentation. In fact, and we've set notice today, which is seven days' notice, and that means the earliest we could hold a public meeting for the board is next Thursday. And if I could, I'd like to find out if the group of you, six of you, can meet next Thursday at the same time, to hear from the board of Port Angeles. And on their request, it's a good time to find out rather than take a do to form. Well, I guess I'm asking if all six of you can be here a week from now.
It'd be the 23rd. I can't. Can I? I cannot.
Can everyone else?
How many can make it?
I left my phone in my car, so I don't know.
So we have four?
I think so.
And perhaps we're going to have six who's not here today. Then let's informally plan, we'll do this right, but let's informally plan to do it next Thursday.
Send out all the documentation that the board sent in.
Yes.
Back to Mike's question, can I address a question to attorney?
Well, let's finish this first.
Okay.
I want to be sure that we got a set of meetings, so let's wrap up that. We wouldn't have to do it Thursday necessarily. No. We can do it, we can do it the following Monday. Comments? We'd all kind of speak up, so we can all hear, please. Also, if you have your cell phones, that may be on vibrate or turned off, that would be something that I frequently overlook. Appreciate that. All right, the first order of business, by the way, this is kind of deja vu all over again, isn't it? The first order of business is to do something we couldn't do last time, we didn't have them all finished up yet, and that is to deal with the minutes for the last two minutes, two meetings. Do you all have the copies of the minutes that Jennifer sent out to you? We have the April 23rd and April 27th. Everybody have April 23rd?
Before you do that, could you explain the deja vu? Or get the county to explain it, you know, what is public notice? What kind of public notice is required for this meeting and other advisory board meetings that the county has?
What, you mean as to why we're meeting again?
Yeah. It's because we didn't, apparently there wasn't the proper public notice. But what is the requirement for public notice? Is it back in the classified section where official notices, or when there's a weekly column in the PDN that lists all the things that are going to happen in the county? You know, what is the definition of public notice?
My understanding, it was not that we did not do the public notice correctly. This was not why we set the reset button. I presume that's not, the issue was not our process, but it was something out of our control. And we just had to do this process, basically, start to finish.
But so that we don't make the quote mistake again? What is the mistake that was made?
Again, I should, we know that everybody's going to be here. What's happening on Monday, the 20th?
I'm out, calling Monday. I'm in Seattle.
I'm sorry?
I'm in Seattle all week.
All week?
How was it Monday? Maybe should do a do a poll and figure out the basis.
Oh, we will figure it out right now, if we could. Let's just run through, say Tuesday, the 21st.
Right now, it looks like we can do it next Thursday.
I think we should do Tuesday.
But that's not seven days.
No, I mean, a week.
A week and a half.
Thursday is. But that's not.
Yeah, you can't go backwards. You need to go the next week, Alan. It's going to be the 20th.
I can't do the 28th.
Can we just send out the thing? Let's just send it out email, and we can all respond this afternoon.
But I won't be here the 28th either.
Well, I propose we do it next Thursday.
Yes.
We have to make sure we have the form, so I'll send out the do to poll in a few days.
But it does sound like we have a problem.
24th?
23rd.
23rd. 23rd. All right. Other than Joe, that's it? Everyone else can do it?
I might be able to do the 24th. It just depends on if we get the theories back in kind of.
Well, let's try the 23rd, could it, could it?
Okay.
23rd?
23rd. We need to check with Dan.
Yeah, we will, sure we can.
Now, we do have an agenda, and I don't want to hop off the agenda and get off the beach path, because we want to get this done expediteously. Sharon, do you have a question specifically relating to?
No, I should just clarify my role. I'm just here to observe so that I can track this process as it moves forward. If there is a legal question, I'm happy to give it a shot, but most likely I'd have to take another advisement, so.
Well, Alan, welcome. Alan is asking me to take the role. First, I'd like to go through the Opportunity Fund Board that's here today, starting with, if you could announce who you are. We appreciate it, and tell me your share.
Sharon Delivar, representing City of Squibb.
George Campbell, representing the City of Port Angeles.
Joe Murray, Clougham County District 3.
Mike McLeir, Clougham County District 1.
Bill Herman, Port Angeles.
Alan Barner, District 2, Clougham County.
Thank you. That is the Board of Directors. I'm Bill Greenberg from the EDC.
Jennifer Lindy, EDC.
Amy Duff, EDC.
And with the guests today, including Nathan West from the city, and the rest of you, identify yourselves.
Sherri Ken, Oriental City Council.
Patrick Downey, Deputy Mayor, City of Port Angeles.
Brian Went, civil deputy prosecuting attorney for Clougham County.
Dale Wilson, NBC News.
Congratulations, Governor. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you, Bill. I appreciate that. Welcome, everybody. First, let me ask you, when you are making comments, to please speak up, not just because I'm hard of hearing, but we have an audience as well. I mean, your backs are kind of turned to them, so when you're making.